This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, next one, let us try to talk about, yeah.
I have one doubt regarding balance sheet, can I ask you no or at the end?
At the end I will take, okay. I will answer at the end. Now, let us try to understand something related to baseline configuration steps. Okay, when you are talking about baseline configuration step, this is the important point as a FICO consultant. As we have already discussed, in any SAP system, as a FICO consultant, you will be doing the initial setup or you will be doing initial configuration in the system, which is nothing but your baseline configuration in which you are setting up the client organization structure or you are setting up the client company code related initial setup. The company code related initial setup or your organization structure is basically part of your baseline configuration. There is a certain list or there are certain configuration steps which you will have to follow while defining baseline configuration from FICO point of view. This is the first activity in SAP performed by the FICO consultant in every project. So first thing what I will do is, let us identify certain configuration step. First point, I will write define company. Second one, I will put defined company code. Or I will put only one here. All this will put under point number one only. Third one, assign company code to company. This is basically your first set. What is the T code and all, we will say later on. First, we need to make sure at least we will remember the points. This is your first set. We need to make sure you will create a company, you will create a company code and you will connect your company code with your company. This is a point number one. Once point number one is completed, you will have to go to second point wherein you will be define chart of accounts. And below that, you will put assign chart of accounts to company code. Third one, define I will say GL account groups. Fourth one, define retained earnings account. Okay, this is your second set. Slowly, we need to get used to these terminologies, these names alone. Okay, I just want you to read at least two or three times and then forget about it. Whether you are remembering it, you are unable to remember it, it does not matter. You just need to read it one or two times and then leave it. If you remember, if you don't remember, does not matter automatically when you practice, you will remember everything without your notice. Automatically, these things will get registered in your mind. Once we are on this system, when you start practice, automatically you will get to know conceptually. But now, please read at least one or two times minimum and then leave it. Don't question yourself, don't verify whether you are able to remember or not remember, that is not at all required. Read and then leave it. This is second point. Third point, I will put define fiscal year variant. Next one, assign fiscal year variant to company code. This is your third set. This is set number three. Next one, for the fourth set, let me write, define posting period variant. Next one, assign posting period variant to company code. Next one, define open and close periods. This is your fourth set. After that, let me put fifth set. Define field status variant. Next one, assign field status variant to company code. This is next set. And after this, next one, define GL tolerance group. And next one, define customer vendor tolerance group. Last one, define user tolerance group. These three tolerance groups is another set. I will make it as another set here. Next one, we will put another set, set number seven. I will say define tax procedure and assign tax procedure to country. This is another set. Next set will be define controlling area and assign company code to controlling area. Last one, activate controlling area components. This is your set number eight. Next one, set number nine will be define document splitting configurations. This we will keep as it is. Once we are on this system, we will try to understand further points related to document splitting. At this moment, if you remember document splitting configuration, that is sufficient. So what and all we have written? First thing we have written, company, company code, assignment of company code to company code. Second one is related to chart of account. Third one is related to fiscal year. Fourth one is related to posting period. Fifth one is related to field status. Sixth one is your tolerances. Seventh one, tax procedure. Eighth one is controlling area. Ninth one is your document splitting. Next one, let me write define leading and non-leading ledgers. Leading, leading ledger also, we need to understand. This is also a single point we will write. Point number eleven. Define I will say activate profit center accounting. And next one, define COFI integration. Point number thirteen, let me put perform company code consistency check. Please ignore my spelling mistakes. Perform consistency check. And after that, let me put define document types number ranges exchange rate open posting period. This is one set. Point number fifteen. Create GL accounts profit center cost center. This is another set. And point number sixteen will be post GL account document. Step number seventeen. Display GL account reports TB, PNL, balance sheet. Basically, these are the points I do like to remember. To execute or to see the scenario, whatever we have here, whatever we have listed here, in order to see this data in SAP, in order to perform this content in SAP, to verify that the same numbers are coming from SAP, we need to make sure these configuration steps are supposed to be known to you. That is it. I am not asking you to remember, I am not asking you to prepare on it. I am just telling you have to know about it. Knowing does not mean you are by-hating it, you are, you know, mugging up, not at all required. If you are aware of it, if you are able to relate, okay, if I say company code, it should not be that, you know, you are hearing company code for the first time when I am talking about it. I don't want that to happen, that is reason. I am writing here first, when you are going through this checklist one or two times, you will be familiar with this terminology. You will know that there is something called company, there is something called company code, assignment, chart of account, account group, retained earning account, fiscal year, posting period. Whatever the terminology is that we have listed here, if you feel that yes, you have read this somewhere, you have heard about this somewhere, that is more than sufficient. Nothing beyond is required. Don't try to by heart, don't try to, you know, do any experiments on this, just read and then just ignore it, that is it. If you remember, you don't remember, forget about it. All I want you to do is read at least one or two times and then forget about it. Whether you remember, you don't remember, it is immaterial. It is not going to make any difference anywhere. Because nobody is going to create an example on this, nobody is going to ask you practically on this. You will remember these things conceptually once we are on SAP system. This is one point that I want you to remember. This is one point which I want everybody to refer, read through it. And remember, these points is what you are practically going to define in SAP system in order to post any debit credit accounting entry in SAP. Without this setting, you cannot record any accounting entry in SAP, it is impossible. It is impossible, meaning here so easily we have listed this accounting interest. Just like that we have listed and then we have pre- put debit credit accounting entry, we were able to list out all these kind of things. And here, there is something that we have listed along with the timer. We understood baseline configuration to be completed within ninety minutes initially. This is our first round of configuration will take ninety minutes maximum time. It is not that you will sit leisurely, you know, with the, as if you have no other work, don't do that. When you are sitting in front of the system, make sure baseline is ninety minute. When I am talking about baseline, this is what all we mean. All this, we mean by baseline configuration until point number fifteen. Until point number fourteen, you have to keep it as baseline and point number fifteen, point number sixteen, point number seventeen, you are going to represent mark data posting and then report. On an average, if you take ninety plus thirty, one twenty and this fifteen, meaning two hour fifteen minutes, two hour fifteen minutes, if you spend two hours, more than sufficient. Within two hours, you can easily complete this set and you can see all these numbers from SAP. It is just that you need to sit two hours, you will complete without any interruptions. You will understand in a conceptual way, you will understand in a connecting way with which it is very easy for you to understand what settings you are doing, why you are doing this setting and how these settings are connected to each other because parallelly, you are going to record the transactions, you are going to generate the report, you are going to relate it with your manual activity, whatever you did on the Excel sheet. When you compare your Excel sheet number, when you open the SAP, when you look at the reports, you will be surprised to see same number, whatever you understood, same number, whatever you have listed on your Excel sheet on your notebook is coming from SAP, meaning in SAP, nothing is happening like a magic. There is no magic, there is no wonder, there is no miracle in SAP. Whatever you are doing manually, same thing you are performing in SAP, but SAP is not ready to use application. In order to record a transaction in SAP, you have to set up the system. Now, set up the system, it takes a little time. To set up the system, you need to make sure what is the requirement. Based on the requirement only, you can set up the system. It is not like that, just like that, I will add my configuration system will work as per my expectation. It is not going to be this scenario anywhere. Please make sure you get your requirement. Requirement is nothing but whatever you want to do, you list out in a piece of paper or in an Excel sheet. Now, when you look at an Excel sheet, now whatever is currently visible, there are some accounting entries, there is a company name, there is PNL, balance sheet TB, which is already prepared. Now, this is my requirement. My requirement is to see this data from SAP. Now, I told what is my company, now define this thing in SAP. Straight away, I cannot post any entry because any company that you are creating in SAP, you need to know certain basic fundamental details about it. Just like that randomly, you cannot do it. You need to know company name, address, different other parameters related to it. All this information you need to list out. Okay, what information I am going to take for it? First of all, you need to know what information you need. What information you take is second point, but before that you should know what information is required. When you get the information, you can accordingly think, okay, I need to create a company, then you will understand what is company, you need to create a company code, then you will understand what is company, then you have company code, company assignment. Why we need to assign company code to company? What is the purpose of it? Similarly, you have chart of account. You will understand what is chart of account, why we are creating chart of account. Inside the chart of account, there are again multiple settings. You are talking about account group, what is account group, why account group is created? You are talking about retained earnings account. What do you mean by retained earnings account? Why we need to create retained earnings account? Slowly, one by one, we will try to understand in a conceptual way. With which what will happen, you can practically relate whatever is happening in the system and why things are created and who will give the information, you have to practically understand. Otherwise, we will be able to understand technically whatever is happening, but conceptually practically, it is very difficult for us to relate. Meaning, tomorrow, assume you are working in a project, you are working with a client, wherein your client is asking you to do certain things or your project manager, your team members are asking you to do something. In that situation, in that scenario, please ensure you will be able to act accordingly. In that situation, in that scenario, you will be able to act accordingly and you can meet their business requirement or you can meet your team requirement. For these things to happen, no other go, you have to put a little efforts at the beginning. Later on, when you are on, when you are moving forward, make sure you do not sit on the basics again and again. Why we are talking about this basics and again and again is usually what most of the people will do is, they start the SAP FICO practice from company, company code, chart of account, whatever we have listed, same thing everybody will do it. It is not that we are doing something newly, it is the same thing, whoever does it, it is the same thing. But the point is, they will create one set, one company code, two company code, three company codes, they will create it. They will pass through maybe twenty percent, thirty percent or fifty percent of their conflict. At that stage, they will realize, okay, I think that I have some gap or I am not able to understand. Let me start from the first moment again. Again, they will sit, again, they will start from company, company code, chart of account, fiscal year. Meaning, they will not be coming out of this level. They will not be coming out of this level. Whenever they reach to a stage, again, they will come back to company, chart of account, fiscal year. Now, you will be rotating between this company, chart of account, fiscal year, GL, AP, AR. As long as you are limiting, as long as you are restricted yourself with company code, chart of account, fiscal year, all these kind of things, GL, AP, AR, you will never understand what is SAP FICO. You will never understand what is SAP FICO because only after this, your SAP FICO begins. Your actual SAP FICO, your practical SAP FICO, your real-time SAP FICO, your project-related SAP FICO, whatever you do as a FICO consultant in any project, in any organization, whatever people are expecting from you in the interview, everything begins after your baseline configuration GL, AP, AR. After this, your journey begins. After this, your learning starts. But what we will do, we are moving around only these points and we are assuming that, okay, let me go to the market, let me put my resume, let me get a job as a FICO consultant with the help of GL, AP, AR. When you know that only after GL, AP, AR, your SAP FICO journey begins. Wherever your SAP FICO actually learning begins, that is where we are putting a full stop. Meaning, you are not actually starting your SAP FICO learning, you are putting a full stop there. Reason, you do not know what exactly we need to understand in SAP FICO. Practically, these are all one-time setting. Practically, these are all one-time setting. Now, you will not be able to work on these kind of things wherever you join tomorrow. It is very hard that you will be creating a company code, you will be creating a chart of account. Tomorrow, when you are in a project, it is very rare. But what we will do, we will end up creating ten company codes, twenty company codes, five company codes, all these settings, which you may not be able to do in your project. Whatever is doubtful, that you may be working in a project practically, that is what we sit, put lot of efforts, practice a number of time. But on the other side, whatever you are expected to work, whatever you are supposed to know, that is what we don't even practice one time thoroughly. Whatever is practically expected from us, whatever you are supposed to know, that is what we not even practice at least one time full cycle. We don't even try to understand what actually happens there, what you are supposed to know from that perspective. This is what usually happens. That is the reason, most of the people, they do not understand why they are not getting the interview calls or even if they get interview calls, when they attend the interview, they do not know the reason why they are not getting selected, why they are getting rejected, why the feedback is negative every time. Reason, there are multiple bots. When we said there are multiple points which we are not able to realize, which we are not able to understand for the reason that you do not know what exactly we need to prepare, how we need to prepare. If somebody is asking you, do you know this or have you worked on this? We will not be able to answer, yes, I worked on this or I know this. Practically, I have seen it, how this is going to work in a project. Reason, we are not thinking from the practical project perspective, we are always thinking only to the extent of interview. This is another mistake. You are not supposed to think from the interview point of view. You are not learning SAP FICO to clear your interview. You are not learning SAP FICO to clear your interview, be very clear with this statement. Because your interview is a thirty-minute game. It is a thirty-minute magical show. If you are able to perform, if you are able to do some magic in thirty minutes, you will get the job. The thirty minutes, who can ask more than what? If you take any topic, nobody can talk more than two minutes on any topic. You take whatever topic is here on SAP FICO, SAP FI, SAP CO, any topic, if you take, your interview is majority thirty-minute duration only, not beyond that, maximum forty, forty-five minutes. Now, in this thirty minutes, in this forty minutes or in this forty-five minutes, if I have to check your SAP FICO knowledge, I will have to test overall. When I say I will have to test overall, I have to check your baseline configuration knowledge, I have to test your GL, your AP, your AR, cash, bank, your asset accounting, taxation, integration, controlling, cost element, cost center, profit center, internal order, assessment, distribution, apart from this, month-end activities, year-end activities, cut-over activities, projects, your client details, generic information related to SAP FI like validation, substitution, different other points. Now, practically, for me to list out, for me to tell only, it takes fifteen minutes. For me to ask questions only, I will take fifteen minutes. Now, the time left is only fifteen to twenty minutes. Now, you are hardly talking fifteen to twenty minutes. And if you are unable to talk this fifteen to twenty minutes, then how we can think about getting a job, surviving in the job, managing the job independently, is forget about it. Forget about, I mean to say, if you are unable to clear your interview, if you are thinking only from your interview point of view, then there is no point that we invest money, we spend time and all because to clear your interview, you don't even need to log into SAP, even without logging into SAP, if you prepare certain points, you can easily get SAP FICO job by clearing the interview because it is a talk show. If you are able to talk for thirty minutes, if you are able to manage the interviewer for thirty minutes, you will get selected, no matter what. Whether you are experienced, inexperienced, whatever may be your background, if you are able to manage your interviewer for thirty minutes, you will get selected. Irrespective of your background. But after that, what is the situation that that is where your journey begins, that is where your problem starts. Wherever problem starts, we don't even consider about it. We always think, okay, that part is later on, first let me get a job. Meaning, you are struggling to clear that thirty-minute interview, but you are forgetting about, once you get the job, every day you have to sit, go to the office, spend eight hours in front of the SAP system. You do not know when, who will call you, when you are supposed to work on which activity, which issue, which scenario, nobody knows. And who will think about this, who will practice on this? Then that is where your actual problem begins and that is where we start thinking, that is where we start realizing, okay, I don't know this, I am not understanding this, let me practice again. Again, you will start company code, chart of account, fiscal year. You will go the whole world again, you will come and start from company code, chart of account, fiscal year. Most of the people will face the same problem. And when you know that these are the commonly faced problems by the people and I don't want you to face similar problems. I don't want you to face a similar problem because this basic content, this basic fundamentals, nobody will ask you. Why nobody will ask you? Because everybody feels that you are aware of it. You are up, you are coming for an interview stating that you have three years experience, four years experience, do you really feel that I will ask you what is company code, what is fiscal year, what is chart of account? Nobody will ask you this. In case if somebody is asking you, that is the easiest interview ever in the world for SAP FICO. And you are the luckiest person to have those questions in your SAP FICO interview. Alright, meaning there are certain things, there are certain points which are supposed to be known individually on your own. There is no exception. Meaning, if somebody is asking you, you are talking about SAP FICO. What if somebody is asking you, what is the full form of SAP? Don't say, I don't know what is SAP full form. I am not going to tell you what is the full form of SAP, you are supposed to know it. Meaning, you should question yourself, you do not know what is the full form of SAP, but you have paid money, you have joined SAP FICO course. And don't expect my trainer will tell me what is SAP full form. Nobody will tell you. And you are not paying to know SAP full form, you are not paying to get to know the basic content, whatever you get on Google, whatever you get on different other platforms for free of cost. Please learn from there only the basic content. We are here to discuss about the points which you will not get anywhere for free of cost. You get paid content where it is not available for free of cost. Meaning, when you look at something, you may not be able to understand and that is what you are able to understand here. Meaning, you are paying money to understand whatever you are not able to understand for free of cost. You are knowing the things, whatever you are not able to get outside. Meaning, you are gaining that comfortableness, you are gaining that confidence which you are missing outside. Please make sure you will be focusing on those areas only. The basic content, whatever you are supposed to do, you have to do individually. Nobody will tell you to do it, including me. I am not going to tell you read what is SAP full form, when SAP was invented, who invented SAP, what is the headquarters of SAP, all these kind of things, even I am not going to talk about it. What is ERP, what are the benefits of ERP, who is the competitor of SAP? What is ERP, what are the benefits of ERP, who is the competitor of SAP, practically, nobody will ask you these points in any interview. Nobody will ever discuss about these points in any project wherever you work. But, it is better, it is better, you are aware of it, meaning, this is our minimum fundamental thing. This is our minimum fundamental thing to know, at least there is some basics about it. Don't expect that I will be teaching all the basic content from the beginning, which I am not going to talk. I am not going to talk about the basic content, whatever you are supposed to know the basic content, I want you to know about it. And I feel that you are all smart enough to know this certain basic content, if. Somebody is not aware of it, somebody may be completely new to SAP, somebody may be, you know, not from accounting background, we have to help each other. When I say we have to help each other, somebody who has already got good understanding on accounting. You can write some basic points related to accounting in the Excel sheet, the ways some of you have shared. Some Excel screenshot in the group, that is actually a good thing, somebody who is new to SAP, somebody who is not from the accounting background. When they read through it, they will understand a few points easily, meaning your points are helping other persons. And when you list out the basic content, let's say, you try to write on what is ECC, ECC stands for. X Y Z, what is SAP, SAP stand for X Y Z, now in SAP you talk about. Easy access, you have S P R O, what is easy access, what is S P R O, whatever it is, now in SAP you have. ECC version, in SAP you have S for Hana version, in ECC you have E H P, and in S for Hana you have. Different, different versions, currently the latest version is twenty twenty-three, these are all the basic fundamental point, even if you Google, you get complete data. Please start from there only, but don't put raw data, raw screenshots from Google and put it in the group. I don't want anybody to put to Google screenshots, that I also can get it, you also can get it. Whatever you straight away get from Google, please don't put those content in the group. If you are filtering it, if you are amending it, if you are simplifying it, your simplified data, your simplified list is what I want you to post in the group, in case. If you want to share, not any Google link, not any other link. Right, when you put this thing, if any other person is looking at it, make sure the other person finds it easier, the other person finds it helpful. And in case if they have any question, if they have any confusion in it, they might put another question below your message that. Can you explain me what is this, what exactly is this, how it is used, that is where you are getting a chance to explain it. Write down one or two lines that this is used for this particular purpose, or you send a voice note in the group. Say that this is used for this particular purpose and all, others can also listen to it, meaning you are helping others on the basic fundamental point number one. You are improving your content also. Imran, can you go on mute please? Okay, these points is what we have to understand, so that what actually will happen. These things will help everybody, everybody in this sense, we are all here to know points which are going to helpful for us in the project. Especially when you are in any job, it's not that the intention is to get ourselves comfortable with the. Interview, interview anyways you will clear it, no doubt about it, you can go clear interview anywhere, wherever you go, I am sure, you will clear the interview. No doubt about it, I will give you hundred percent assurance, you will clear interview yourself. Without anybody's help, you can clear the interview, because you will gain that knowledge anyways. But after that, once you are in a project, always consider you are in a project, you are working at client location. What you are going to do, what you are supposed to know, what you are supposed to talk, how you are supposed to get the requirement, who will give you what, how you will understand. How you will, you know, do the configurations, how you will test, what documentations are required, if you understand what is your approach, if you do not understand what is your approach. You know these fundamental points, if you are able to think through these points, this understanding, these points will practically help you when you are in a project tomorrow. Happen, you may be, you know, under the type of certain keywords, like somebody may tell that, you know, you will get real-time project knowledge. You will get real-time thing and all, there is nothing called real. Remember, whatever you are learning, whatever your understanding should be real-time. If somebody is telling, you know, I will give you real-time project training, then whatever you are learned, whatever you have practiced, it's not real-time, you need to accept that statement. You need to expand that, when somebody is telling, I will tell, I will teach you real-time concept, I will tell you real-time system. Then whatever you have seen, is it not real-time, whatever you understood, is it not real-time, whatever you practiced, is this not real-time? When you put question to yourself, you will get your answers, meaning you have to be very practical and you have to be very conscious about what you are learning. How you are understanding a thing, forget about what configuration you are doing and all, configuration is offline. You can anyways do the configuration, you will anyways get to know the config. But try to understand the scenarios, try to understand the requirement along with the accounting. When I say along with the accounting, because we are working in FICO, as a FICO, you are all aware, your course content itself will tell you in FICO. GL, AP, AR, cash, bank, asset and all, everybody tells in FICO, this is what is there. But nobody even thinks about GL means what, AP means what, AR means what, cash means what, bank means what, nobody thinks about it. And you will see it from SAP point of view, and then we will understand that we are a consultant, we don't do all these kind of things, end user will do it. How end user will do it, end user will do it only when you set up the system, how you will set up the system. Only when you understand what is your business process, how you will get to know the business process. You will get to know the business process only when you talk to the user, or only when you talk to the client. When you talk to the user, when you talk to the client, you are not going to talk about SAP FICO configuration. You are never going to talk about defined company, company code, chart of account, fiscal year, posting period, when you talk, they will open the door, please go from this here to your home. Because nobody wants your configuration, and then you are not supposed to focus on your configuration, because. Tomorrow when you are working in any project, you are not going to talk about configuration, you are going to talk about only the business process, only the accounting process. If I am a person who is working in accounts payable department, I am a person who is working in the banking, who is working for cash, who is working on taxation, fixed asset whatsoever. Now you are working as a FICO consultant and your project manager asked you to work with me, I am the user who is working on fixed asset. And you have been asked to get the asset requirement, when you are getting the requirement on the fixed asset, please make sure. Please make sure what information you are going to ask me. Does not mean you will, you know, list out all the configuration steps for the fixed asset, don't ask me what is your chart of depreciation. What is your depreciation area, what is your this, what is your that, I don't even understand what you are talking about it. Meaning, I don't know what is chart of depreciation, because I am not a consultant, I am not from SAP background. You ask me in the accounting language, talk to me in the accounting language, I will tell you in the accounting language, don't talk to me in the SAP language. Because I am not the person who is SAP background, I am not the person who has SAP experience before. I am a basic, common accounting user, please talk to me in the accounting language, meaning. If you are able to ask me what is your fixed asset, how your fixed assets are used in the current organization, what accounting interest you are posting. How you are calculating depreciation, how, what kind of reports you are generating, how your fixed asset register is prepared, then I will tell you. Okay, this is how we are preparing, this is what we are following, then you will understand, when you understand my business process. It is your responsibility to map my business process into SAP, you are the SAP consultant, not I am, I am just a user. And now I am not even working on SAP. I am just a user, I am not working in SAP, I do not know anything about SAP, so forget about talking to me in the SAP language. So you have, you have to talk to me in the basic accounting language, make sure you get what information you require to map it in SAP. To map it in SAP, whatever the information that you require, please get it from me, but ask me in such a way that I will understand your question first. Don't show me your technical knowledge to me, meaning you put, you know, what is your chart of depreciation, how you define it and all, if I. Listen to all your questions, if I ask me, sorry, can you please repeat it once again, how does it look, how does it feel for you? This is what will happen when you are in any client location, when you are talking to a client, make sure. You step down one level and then talk at a way, at a tone where your user will understand. Meaning, your user will understand only the accounting terminology, only the accounting language, because. The common language, common communication between consultant and user is basic accounting only. It's basic accounting, not SAP. Basic accounting, basic business process, basic business requirement, now simple point if you take, assuming that you are running a company. Assuming that you are running a company, now for your company, you are anyways doing a different, different business transactions on a daily basis, like. Your day-to-day expenses, day-to-day collections, payments, sales, purchases, taxes, everything you are accounting. Everything you are doing, recording in your accounting books, whether you do it manually in a book, using your bookkeeping. Or you are using the tally, Oracle, any other accounting software, any other accounting, basic application. End of the day, for you, it is a business transaction, application does not matter. As simple as like, like if you wanted to call me, if you want to talk to me, if you wanted to message me, all you need is my name and my mobile number. If you know my name is Achai, if you know my mobile number is this, if you are using Apple mobile phone, Samsung mobile phone, Redmi whatsoever. You are not going to change my name, you are not going to change my mobile number, it is just your device is changed. Somebody may be saving my name and number in Apple, somebody may be saving my name and a number in Samsung. Somebody may be saving my name and a number in Redmi mobile phone, somebody may be saving in Oppo or any other mobile, but everywhere it is the same name, Achai, it is the same number. Device is changing, but my name, my number is not changing, it is the same thing. Your accounting process, your business process will not be changed, it is only the accounting application which is changed, meaning. In place of Apple phone, you may be using Oracle, in place of any other application, you may be using SAP or any other thing, you just need to relate. Things through which you can relate to the point, through which you will get the concept. And then once you are able to relate it, once you are able to think in a different way, in which you are able to connect to the point. Easily you will understand what is happening, what exactly you are supposed to understand as a consultant. Otherwise, what usually happen, we will end up reading all the blogs, we will end up reading all the definitions, theory, material from X Y Z sources. It is not going to give you any knowledge, that is not going to give you any knowledge, this is not your academic. Nobody is going to come and conduct YY exam, nobody is going to conduct any practical exam. You are not going to give any mock interview or anything to anybody, it is just that you are going to talk about your understanding. You are going to talk about your experiences only, according to your understanding, according to your experience, please. Talk in the similar way, if you take any content, if you take any topic, if you take any article, you will find a lot of things. When I say you will find a lot of things, you take any generic subject, or you take any general topic. You may be finding different, difference people talking about different, different opinions. But talk about some, some, something related to some movie you take, assuming that you watched a movie. Now you will go to YouTube, you will go to, you know, the onsite or any website, you wanted to see the review about it. It is the same movie, but different people are talking about it different way, because it is their personal opinion, it is their experience after watching movie or whatsoever. Now somebody is telling review by Achai, somebody is telling reviewer, review by B, review by C, D, E, F. Now for the same SAP FICO movie, you put review by your name, you are the author, you are the content writer there. Whatever is your understanding, you please tell according to your understanding, according to your experience. Maybe understanding certain thing, I may not be understanding certain thing, but it is not the situation for you, because. Your thinking is different, your understanding is different, my thinking is different, my understanding is different. Whatever I understand, whatever I feel, this can be understood in this way easily, I may be sharing my views. I may be sharing my experience, I may be sharing my points which I have experienced in the past, which I have seen from the different people. Who are getting through in SAP, who are failing in SAP, both things I will show you. Points which will make you get success in SAP, points which will make you get failure in SAP, both I will show. If I show only one point, you will not be able to realize whether this is right or wrong, whatever the points I will tell, I openly tell you, go verify anywhere. I openly tell, go verify with the people who are working as SAP FICO consultant, check with them, whatever we are talking, whatever we are understanding. Is this correct, is this what we need to understand or something else we need to understand? If I focus on configuration part alone, if I am very good at configuration, definition, T code, table, path and all. Will I become a FICO consultant, will I be able to manage, they will tell this is not going to be used at all. They, they will simply tell, no, you don't need to worry about it, you take, you know, take ten rupees by, you know, some ten A four size papers. You print all the data, whatever you want, whatever the summary that you make, print everything on the A four size sheets, at your office, you will be given a desk. In your desk, completely you, you take pins, you stick all the ten papers around your desk. Meaning, if you sit in front of your laptop, left you will see ten papers, right you will see ten papers, everywhere SAP only. Meaning, nobody will say anything, it's up to you, add on all the key points, make a wallpaper on your laptop, nobody is going to say anything. Write down all the key points, T codes, path, whatever you like, that this is important, put that image, make it as your wallpaper in the laptop. Nobody will say anything, meaning, it is that much open when you are in a project. It is that much open when you are in a project, because everybody knows your topic is not going to help me complete my project. Your understanding, your knowledge, your consulting skillset, your consulting thought process is going to help in my project, because. Tomorrow, if there is a requirement, if there is a problem, if there is any scenario, if there is any testing whatsoever. I want you as a FICO consultant to talk to my client, to talk to my user. Do you have that confidence, do you have that knowledge, do you have that skillset to go talk to the user, talk to the client, face them. Understand what is the requirement, in case if there are any problems, if they are finding it very difficult to understand. Will you be able to talk, will you be able to convince, will you be able to manage this situation? This is what you are supposed to know as a FICO consultant, and this is where you need to focus, not about your configuration. Not about your T code, not about your user manual, nothing, these things are. Not supposed to make any huge impact which will turn your life. These things are not going to create any impact, even if you have everything there, you cannot do nothing, you can do nothing, because. Your configuration document will not help you in your project, your mater- material will not help you in your project. Remembering of your T code, table path, nothing is going to help you. If you doubt me, talk to people who are working on SAP FICO, they will tell you the raw facts. Meaning, why people struggle, because they fail to understand the requirement, they fail to talk to the clients, they fail to convince the client. And if you are able to capitalize these areas, if you are able to focus on these areas, no point that you will get scared, no point that you will get. Negative feedback, no point that you will be suffering in your project later on. Because it's all about managing, why you need to manage, why you should not focus here is, if you work for ten projects, if you work for ten clients. You will not be seeing same process in ten project, you will not be seeing it ten same processes in ten companies, meaning. Company to company, project to project, manager to manager, consultant to consultant, everything will differ. Why everything will differ, because they are different, company is different, candidate is different. Then automatically they are understanding their working culture, their working procedure, everything is different. Now you are not a robot to do the same thing, you are a human being, you know the subject, you know the understanding, make sure if you are working in client A. You will have to adopt client A business process, work according to client A. Similarly, later on, if you are working for client B, adopt client B business process, work according to client B. Client C, adopt client C business process, work according to client C, this is what you need to develop, this is your consulting skillset. And this is what you have to understand, this is what you need to learn, nothing beyond that, and if you understand this point. You will manage anything, you can work in any project. There is nothing called, I have not practiced this, I do not know this configuration, you don't even care about configuration. Whatever the configuration you want, you just Google it, tell me that a topic for which you don't get any documentation, any configuration, any video on Google. There is nothing in SAP so far that this particular thing which is not available on Google. Very simple point, anybody who is releasing a product, they will release the user manual. It's not that a puzzle, it's not a game who is conducting a, you know, the competition in the market for SAP. SAP itself will give the user manual, SAP itself will share something called SAP best practices. They will share, they will share the documentation, how to configure it, they will share how this functionality will work, meaning document is ready-made. Your configuration, test script, test scenario, everything is ready-made. All you require is how you are able to look at it, how you are able to understand it, how you are able to relate it to a business process. And will you be able to implement this business process to a client tomorrow? Is this what you need to question, this is what you need to understand, if you are able to think on these areas from the beginning. Easily you can manage, easily you can think in a different way, because these are all the points, sound easy, but when you bring them into practice. these are all the points, sound easy, but when you bring them into practicality, they sound little tricky, we get unnecessary confusions. But yes, whatever the confusion that you are getting here, same confusion at a double speed, you will get it in your project. Here there is no pressure, you can learn with peace of mind, but in the project, the same thing will happen with, with high pressure, meaning they will give you some requirement, they say that tomorrow morning we have a meeting with the client, please make sure you are prepared with it. You need to give a demo, you need to give a presentation, you need to discuss with the client, if we have a meeting tomorrow. When you do not know ABC of it, how you will be confident in the call or in the meeting tomorrow? Meaning, these, this is the extreme level that I am talking. But when you know these extreme levels, accordingly you will be preparing, accordingly you will be tuning your mindset, so that tomorrow, whatever you see in your interview, wherever, nothing makes you feel panic, nothing will make you feel you know, tensed or nothing will make you feel uncomfortable, because you see that this is nothing, I, I am aware of it, meaning even if there is a tricky situation, even if there is a problem, you can take it easily, you can think, you can work confidently there. From the beginning, when you are learning onwards, you are working, you are learning in the similar way. And when you see in the project tomorrow, if things are working or things are coming in your way in this similar approach, you will definitely find it easier, you will definitely find it comfortable there. Remember, this mindset is what slowly you have to develop, because this is not something, today night you will sleep, tomorrow morning you will have that mindset, it takes time. It takes time, and when we know that it takes time and this is what is required, this is what is expected from you in the market, and this is where you need to focus. Clearer? So these points is what we will be focusing, as I said, I want each of you to take some initiative on working on certain basic fundamental like, one of you take initiative, what is SAP full form of SAP? Don't copy paste Google content, you try to simplify it. SAP means SAP products and applications in data processing whatsoever. ECC, ECC full form is what, and then S for Hana, what is S for Hana full form? How many versions are there in S for Hana, how many versions are there in ECC, what is the latest version in ECC, what is the latest version in S for Hana till when ECC is used in market, from when SAP is stopping? ECC version, these points, even if you Google it, you will get, this is the general knowledge of SAP. This is the general knowledge of SAP, which we have to acquire, in general only. This is not related to course content, if you are talking about all these points in course content, we all have to do PhD in SAP. It cannot be completed in three months, it cannot be completed in four months, it will take three years, five years. Meaning, this is an option, when we say this is an ocean, this is not particularly possible to understand it, to complete everything within three to four months, highly impossible. What we need to know, we need to understand the logics, we need to understand the techniques, key points, what is the market expectation? And what is expected from you, what you are supposed to do project, what you are supposed to do showcase, to impress the other person. Only those areas you have to focus, then easily you can prepare within three to four month, when you talk, you will feel the difference. Maybe your friends, whosoever currently you are talking, will definitely tell you that you are talking in a different way, there is a huge difference in you. You will practically realize it, and that realization you have to get, that should be your target. And when you are working towards these targets, automatically you will get this success, there is no point that you think whether I get job, I don't get job, forget about job, you are not focusing on the job here, you are not focusing on the interview. After getting the, getting the job, when you are in a project, we are talking, we are thinking, we are learning, whether we can manage successfully there, confidently there or not, that is what the whole objective of what we are learning here. The objective is not to clear your interview, objective is to make sure you work confidently, you work independently in your project. Without having any dependency, tomorrow there is no rule, no guarantee, I am available for you to help you in your project, I may not be available, because I am also working like you. And you are not supposed to have any dependency on anybody, why you need to depend on somebody? There is no point that we will depend on somebody, we should have that confidence that yes, let me work on it, why I cannot work on it? Let me put at least some effort, all you need is some guidance, some hint is what you require, that guidance, that hint, I will be always available to give you. I will be always there to give you that guidance, to give you those hints in your projects, in your work. With that hint, with that guidance, you can easily manage it, but don't expect that when you are in the project, I will take your screen, I will, you know, give you detailed step by step, I may not be doing it, I will not be doing it. Because if you are learning with me, I expect that you will be capable enough to handle independently. And that is my target, that is my expectation, I want you to have the same target. I want you to have the same target, so that tomorrow if you have any requirement, make sure you are able to explain me the requirement. Meaning, if you talk to me or if I talk to you one to one, say, when you say that you have a requirement, you have been asked to work on something, make sure you are able to explain me your requirement in such a way that I can understand what is the requirement. Make sure that you are able to explain the requirement to me in such a way that I will understand it. So how you explain, it's up to you. Because I, I am, I am not the one who is working in your project, I am not the one who is talking to your client, I am not the one who is interacting with your user, it is you. You are supposed to understand your client business process, you are supposed to understand your client business requirement, and you are the one who is supposed to work on it, and you are the one, if you have any question, you should know how to ask, whether to ask Google, you need to type, Google cannot read your mind, right? Though you have AI, everything you need to ask, only when you ask, you get this answer. Meaning, you should know how to put your question, you should know how to put your confusion query whatsoever, and there you focus first, forget about the solution, focus on your doubt, focus on your confusion, focus on your question, if you are able to focus on these areas, automatically you will get the solution. Because when you put wrong question, you will get wrong answer only. Most of the times, this is where we go wrong, you search with wrong keywords, you search in a wrong way, you will end up getting wrong result only, if you search right content, you get the right content, if you search right content, you get wrong content. I mean, whatever you search, accordingly you will get it. For these points, I want you to focus on it, I want you to be very practical. I want you to be very practical, so that when we move forward, when we proceed with the configurations and all, there will be no point of confusion. You will find it difficult, you will find it tricky, you will find it confusing at the beginning only. Infusion difficult, you know, this is very tough and all, whatever, if you feel that you need to give up, you please give up at right at this stage only. Because nothing is lost now, it's only a week time that we have started, it's only a ten days, you can give up now only, it's fine if you feel no, this is very difficult, because we are starting from the difficult. I don't want to tell this, you know, the tricky things or you know, these surprises, shocking news, all these kind of things, I don't want to tell you in between, I don't want to tell at the end, which will give you a shocking at the end, which I don't want to create. I will tell all the critical points, all the tricky points at the beginning, so that going forward, everything we will make it simplified, think we will make it more easier. When we are starting discussing about the difficult point, you know, the tricky points and all, going forward, there is nothing, whatever I am talking is at extreme level. It's very hard, it's very, very less chances that you will be facing these situations, which I am talking now, but there is no rule. You may be in a project where all this is kind of a situations you may have to face. But going forward, when we are talking about it, when we are discussing about it, we will be simplifying these things. Only when I show you the complexity, then only you will realize how this can be simplified. If I show you simple things, I am going to make it complicated. When going forward, things are getting complicated, you will not gain the confidence, you will lose the confidence, because you feel that right, initially it was very simple, but going forward, everything is becoming complicated, that is how it will be. Going forward, definitely things will be complicated, that is why we don't talk simple things at the beginning, we to complicated things at the beginning, so that going forward, there is no point of complication, there is no point of fear. I am creating fear in you at the beginning itself, later on, even if I try to create fear, even if I try to create confusion in your mind, you will not be confused, you will not be scared, because you are used to it. Meaning, nothing sounds like, you know, this is a very difficult situation, situation, very difficult, very, you know, complex, you don't feel it. You will find it easy and you can easily crack anything, and that is how you have to develop your mindset. And for it, you will have to put a little extra effort, extra effort, I mean to say, not just focusing on the config and all, understand business requirement, focus on different, different points, which will help you gaining more knowledge, which will help you talk confidently to the any person. Let it be your interview, let it be your project team, your client, your user, anybody, make sure you sound confident, and you feel confident, first of all, you should be convinced with yourself, what you are going to talk, you should be comfortable. And to get that comfort zone, it takes a little time. It takes a little time, and that is the reason I don't open SAP at the beginning, I don't do any configuration at the beginning, we know the fact, I know the fact, it takes time for anybody. Because we are all from the different backgrounds, and everybody knows what is our background. Somebody may be already working in SAP, somebody may be already trained from outside, somebody may be completely new to SAP. So we need to make sure we are all on the same page. Meaning, first of all, we need to make sure our mindsets are sync. You are synchronized to me or I am synchronized to you, meaning whatever I am talking, why I am talking this way, I want everybody to understand. Then you will understand, will recognize, you will recognize him in this sense, you will connect it to my points, my intentions, what is my intention behind you talking all these points? It will reach to you personally, then you will put your attention in such a way where you will not get deviated. And in the market, you will get to know different points, different content from different people, somebody talks you in such a way which will make you feel demotivated. Somebody will talk to you in such a way, you will feel like giving up SAP. Somebody will talk to you in such a way which will, you know, which may, you know, give you confidence, yes, let me try it, let me do it. But which point you are considering, to whom you are going with, whose words you are following, it all depends on your individual. Because nobody can manipulate anybody, nobody can control anybody, it is you who is supposed to be confident, it is you who is supposed to be strict towards what you are learning. You hear something in the market, somebody says different, different things, don't go by it, don't follow them, they are not the one who is teaching you SAP and they are not the one who is telling you facts about SAP, first of all, you do not know whether that is fact or right. By just hearing in the air, you are deciding something in your mind, then you don't have that confidence, you are not sure, you are not strong about what you are learning, you are not strong about what you are learning, that situation should not be the case. Okay? So these points I want you to refer at least two times. Two times for me and for you more than two times. Two times, whether you like, you don't like, for me, you need to read these points two times, just read and then ignore it. Whether you are remembering, not remembering, I don't care, you also don't care about it, just read it two times and then ignore it, leave it. Whether you are able to remember, you are not able to remember, it is fine, if you read at least two times, tomorrow, when we talk about these points, anyways I am going to talk in detail about every point, configuration, everything else in detail, crystal clear. That time, I want you to feel that you are familiar to this, at that moment, I don't want you to see it for the first time, I want you to see it as something that you have already heard about this before. It should not be completely new, I want it to be something which is familiar to you already, then you will relate it to it practically, conceptually, because there, we are going to understand with the help of different, different, simple, simple examples, which will make you connect to the concept. Okay, so refer to this, the remaining points related to this, we will be continuing in the tomorrow's sessions. Practically, tomorrow we will list out the further points, after this, what exactly we need to know, what we need to understand with respect to configuration. Okay, any questions so far, please raise your hand, I will answer. Somebody was asking a question, right, this NN?
Hello, yeah, Ajay, what about the status for SAP access?
You will be receiving it tomorrow, tomorrow I will connect, I will, I will share the link through which you can download the G U I, and then I will share ID password tomorrow, tomorrow you will receive it.
Thank you.
Okay, yeah.
Uh, Ajay?
Yeah.
Uh, so, uh, I have created some transactions, uh, which are the bank transactions only on the credit side. Uh, can I do that? Because uh, uh, cash is asset, right? So is the bank asset side or it can it go in liability side, the bank?
Bank will not go to liability unless there is a overdraft.
Okay, because I didn't create any transactions related to the debit side, only the credit side I have created the transactions uh, related to bank, so is that practically, uh, can be, can it be done or, uh, that has to be corrected?
What you do is, whatever you have listed, you try to put it on, maybe if you take, if you have listed on the paper, try to take a picture, put it on the group, or if you have listed it on the Excel sheet, put it on the group, so that you know, you will get the different inputs on it. And if required, I will open this session tomorrow, maybe sometime, that I can ask somebody who is good at accounting, who is working on accounting to explain this portion. And then we will get it recorded, whoever is, you know, new to accounting or there may be some basic understanding related this kind of things, we can get them clarified practically.
Okay, uh, one more thing, because I was unable to, uh, the balance sheet was the problem actually, I, I was able to create P and L everything. I, actually, there are simple things which I was able to create, I could able to finish everything, but I want to try different, different way, so I tried.
No, 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 don't try different ways, simple things only you will have to do, don't try the different ones, because in SAP, different things are handled.
Okay.
Huh, if you are able to do the simple things, that is sufficient.
Okay.
That is sufficient.
Okay.
Because different scenarios are handled in a different way in SAP, only to the extent of a basic, only we need to relate it to the accounting. Remaining part, the connection between accounting and SAP is taken care in a different way, which we will be understanding once we are in SAP, but before that, to make sure that we are able to understand that what is debit, what is credit, how TB is prepared, how P and L is prepared, how profits are coming, how balance sheet is coming, we are only doing this activity to make sure we are convenient, we are comfortable with it, and we are recollecting our basic accounting fundamentals, that's it, that's the only objective.
Okay, uh, one more thing, uh, in P and, uh, initially when you explained, uh, balance sheet and, uh, P and L and all, um, in X, P and L statement, we didn't mention any sign, right, profit? Uh, when we mentioned that profit in left side, uh, I mean, the debit side, we didn't use any sign in P and L. Only in the balance sheet we used, so we don't have to use anywhere in the, yeah, I mean, in any scenario in P and L statements, right? When we get the profit, uh, the, with the sign, only in the balance sheet we, we have to use, right?
Correct, because in your P and L, you have debit credit indicator, because left hand side, whatever you write on the P and L is by default debit. Right hand side, whatever you write in your P and L is by default credit, so we practically don't put any number there.
Okay, alright.
But when it comes to balance sheet, balance sheet does not show any debit credit indicator anywhere. Balance sheet is identified debit credit with the help of number only. Positive number is identified as debit, negative number is identified as credit, meaning by looking at the trial balance, you will come to know whether it is debit or it is credit, because your trial balance contains account, debatable, credit balance, or single line balance plus minus number.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, and another question, um, uh, when you said that when during data migration, we, the trial balance is mandatory, right? So we will, we just have to understand the trial balance, what is what, and do we have to create the trial balance in SAP?
No, no, we don't create the trial balance in SAP, trial balance is provided by the client, and you need to understand the trial balance, and you need to split the trial balance into multiple partitions.
Okay.
You will have to split GL, AR, customer, cash, bank, inventory and all, and within that you have again some breakup. Meaning your TB is broken down into multiple bits and pieces. And then you need to load the data, download the trial balance from SAP, and make sure your client given trial balance is exactly matching with your SAP downloaded trial balance. And this pure SAP FICO consultant, meaning it is pure our activity. Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. Venkatesh.
Ajay, just wanted to know when can we get access for YouTube videos?
Access, you will be receiving it tomorrow, system access or the, the recording access?
Y- YouTube videos access.
For that, I will share some instructions uh tomorrow, tomorrow morning I will share some instructions, accordingly, I will arrange the access.
Sure.
Okay, yeah. Sadiq.
Uh Ajay, this baseline configuration is a one-time activity or each company, this company specific?
This is one-time activity for each company code.
It means like it is a company code specific, like for each company code we have to define.
Yes, you are right.
Okay. But like a chart of accounts, this uh is it for all company code, we assign one chart of account or it is client?
No, 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 that, that you, you don't think about it now, I will explain on what basis you will have to remember it, now. Just read through whatever is listed, I will explain, I will expand, I will explain with the different examples. With which all these confusions whatever you are having now will be removed permanently. Even if somebody is trying to create confusion, you will never get confused.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. Chaya.
Hi Ajay, um correct me if I am wrong, so when you started the classes, you said like when the end user entered all the general lectures, so SAP automatically creates the P N L balance sheet and all the things, right?
Only T B is automatically created, P N L balance sheet, you have to map it. Based on our P N L balance sheet H L mapping, they will be generated, otherwise system cannot understand which one to take in P N L, which one to, which one to take in balance sheet, again within P N L. Which one should go as expense, which one should go as income, within balance sheet, what is asset, what is liability. SAP cannot understand, if we need to define a mapping, based on our mapping, P N L balance sheet will come, but if T B is straightforward, SAP will provide.
Okay, do we do all the mappings and all those things as a consultant?
Yes.
Okay.
We will be doing it, client will share us all the details. And according to the client requirement, we will be mapping it, in short, which one to go debit, which one to be in the debit side, which one to be on the credit side. What is asset, what is liability, within asset, you have different headings, right? If you look at any P N L, any balance sheet, you have different, different schedules. Current asset, fixed asset, investments, accounts receivable and all. All the categories, inside each category, what are the G L accounts, client will give you. Accordingly, you will be mapping it, meaning everything is decided, everything is updated based on the client requirement only, they will only share the requirement, accordingly, we will map it.
Okay, so as I understand from today's class. So we will go to the client, he will give us the requirement and we will go back to the company and then we will um set up everything in the SAP and then end user will do the rest of the work, like entering the entries and all those things, that's correct?
Right, correct, you are right.
So can you just, I am not asking you to explain everything, but can you please tell me like two or three issues like what we get in this process?
No, that we will be discussing, once, yeah, once we start the SAP system, I will be writing the different, different scenarios in the Excel sheet. And I will practically execute and then show them, I will give different similar scenarios for you to exercise, for you to practice.
Thank you.
Okay, yeah, alright. Yeah, NN. Shashikala.
Good evening, sir. Uh, day before yesterday is passed out.
Yeah.
Um, I don't know, sorry. Uh like Amazon, we have products like uh like uh ele- um electronics, sorry, electricals, uh
Hmm, yeah, yeah, I got your point, yeah, continue.
Like that, yeah, like that, I have checked in Arabindo like a pharma company. In that they are, they have API like API or peptides, R and D like that, these are, we have to consider like products are, the, these are business units.
Business unit, product or business unit is one and the same as of now.
Okay.
Once we start uh creating the profit center, there I will make you understand clearly how you are going to define it and on what basis we will be deciding it. And how you will make your client understand at what level you need to define the profit center, in short, to make you understand at short. You will be creating a profit center at a level where you want to generate profit and loss account balance sheet. Normally, you don't want to generate so many P N Ls, so many balance sheets, right, agree?
Yes.
Uh do you want to keep less P N Ls, less balance sheets? So at that level, where you want to create your P N L balance sheet, at that level, you will be creating a profit center. Now it is completely business requirement, at what level they want to create the P N L and then balance sheet. Accordingly, we will be creating a profit center there.
Okay, now means client only gives uh that pro- uh details, huh?
Client only will give the details, but we need to make the client understand how SAP works.
Yes. Okay.
And once we make the client understand, accordingly, they will understand, okay, this is what is our requirement and this is how SAP works. Either they will change their business process according to SAP or they won't know, you have to change the SAP process according to my business process. If it is not the similar.
Okay, uh for example, you said both Samsung or Apple, in this case, uh I am okay about products. So when I check like D R L means uh Dr. Redes, these are manufacturing related one, now I am little anxious, I am, I didn't get clarity.
No, there you will have to see, when you are looking at a website, sometimes what will happen? One website may be having different, different sub-entities, when it is means they are completely different names. Talking about Dr. Redes, Dr. Redes is a separately legal registered entity.
Yes.
So Dr. Redes is a separate company code, it is not a profit center.
Okay.
Because you have a separate business unit, separate operations with the name of Dr. Redes in the market.
Yes, sir.
So if that is the case, that will be a separate company code, since it is part of that group, then they are listing out these points also, these names also there.
Um, in this pharma case, how we have to understand the products, it means I suppose if it is A P A products, A P A will have different types of uh tablets are, we have to consider those are uh profit centers.
No, no, A P L whatever, A P L as a profit center you will take, under that you have different, different medicines, right? Those things are your material. And those different categorizations will be created as material group from the M M side, M M module side. Under that material group, it will be creating.
With the example of pharma.
Once we are in that topic, I will explain, yeah, with the different, different industries, I will take similar examples and then I will make you understand.
Ajay, can I, can I add one point here, I have noted this pharma company as well in the exercise.
Yeah, yeah, you can, yes, you can.
I have noted that like Apollo Pharma. In Apollo Pharma, I have noted like products called personal care products, baby care products, vitamins and supplements and food and drinks. There in Apollo Pharma. These kind of products, they, they are producing.
Correct. You are right, these things usually differ from company to company, because though you take the same, same, similar company from the same industry, but these two companies may have different reporting requirement. It's completely how that management wants to look at their reporting, accordingly, these things will be set up, so that's the reason. We should not straight away by heart, we should not straight away remember anything, you have to focus on the requirement. How requirements are coming, according to the requirement, how we are working, how we are thinking, how we are setting up the system. These points, this understanding, these ideas is what we are going to practically apply in different, different scenarios. Which we will be doing, once we start our company code configuration in SAP, I will take different, different examples, whatever you have taken. From there only, I will make you understand how this is supposed to be set up and what are the different possibilities. How you are going to phrase it, what information you will ask from your client. If your client is asking for certain clarifications, how you are going to confirm to them that this is how it is going to work. Okay.
One more question, you said the group currency is U S D. Uh, is it globally used currency means uh more uh exchange rate or uh globally it is using as a U S D? That's why you are using in group currencies, huh?
Yeah, normally, any currency can be traded with dollar.
Okay, that's why we are.
Huh, majority, if you say more than eighty percent, more than ninety percent of the projects or clients will be using US dollar as their group currency. Only some current, some can clients, you know, who are working in Europe continent at all, they may be using Euro as group currency, but majority you have to remember dollar only, in case if somebody is asking, say openly that in your previous project, in your current client, you were using dollar as a group currency.
Okay, like
Because tomorrow when some
Like this
Tomorrow when somebody is asking you.
Mostly used one.
Correct.
Okay. Oh.
Yeah, your understanding is correct.
Okay.
Yeah. Yes, NN.
Yeah, Ajay.
Yeah.
Uh, profit center and cost center, both, uh I, I mean, what exactly profit center and cost center, how it works and all? Uh where we have to use all these things, will you explain in future because I just, I know.
Yeah, 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 we will be understanding, we will be understanding everything in detail with practical examples.
Okay.
Yeah. Whatever I am showing, whatever I am talking now is only to make sure that you will be familiar with the terminology only, whatever I am talking now, if you are able to understand it ten percent of it, I am happy with it. Not even expecting fifty percent, my expectation is only to reach you ten percent.
Okay.
If this is reaching you ten percent, that is fine, the purpose is fulfilled from my side. Because I am going to talk about each and every point in detail with different, different practical examples. Which you will find it more comfortable, more convenient, and you will be in a position to take your own examples, similar to what I am talking.
Yeah, uh Ajay, one more thing, uh when initially we were writing the transactions and our business transactions. So in SAP, when we start doing all these things, there won't be any concept called entries, but only the accounting entries, we, I mean, business tax, transactions, we won't track, only the accounting entries, we do that, right? That we do in the G Ls, until that time, we won't do any of these business process related things.
Correct, that business transaction, here we are writing manually in the Excel sheet, but in the project, you will find a proof, for example. You are talking about purchase, you are talking about rent, you are talking about salary. If you pay salary to somebody and you have a proof called payslip.
Yeah.
Correct, and if you are purchasing something from any shop, you have a invoice bill from that shop. If you are, you know, re- reimbursing some taxi expenses or transportation expenses to a staff. Just like that, you will not give money to the staff, right, okay, I am giving you five hundred, you please go and taxi to your home. You will tell them, I will give you five hundred, only when you give me the bill, agree?
Yes.
And this is what we are practically writing in the Excel sheet, for the same thing, you will have a physical document in any organization, meaning no proof, no accounting.
Okay, so when we, when we create the G Ls, then, I mean, these accounting entries in G L. Uh if there are duplicate uh accounting entries like cash, if it comes multiple times. Uh will that say that it is like duplicate that you cannot create a uh again, so how we?
No, 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 master is created one time, transaction can be created a number of times. It is as simple as like you are saving my number in your mobile phone. For example, you have to call me, you have to talk to me today, you have to talk to me tomorrow, you have to talk to me, let's say in a month, you need to talk to me fifteen days. So are you going to save my name, number fifteen times or one time?
Only once.
But you can call me a number of times on the same name, same number?
Yeah.
My name, number is your G L account. Okay, your transaction is your call, you can call me a number of times on the same number. Similar way, on the same G L account, you can create a number of transaction, just make sure same transaction is not duplicated, not same account, cash can be posted multiple times. But same transaction, for example, you purchased some stationary items from a shop. You know that you purchased only one time today for five hundred rupees, make sure today's transaction is accounted only one time, agree?
Yeah.
That you are not supposed to duplicate it, if you purchased two times, you have two separate bills, yes, you can create it two times, otherwise strictly one time.
Okay, okay.
Yeah. Sahithi.
Good evening Ajay, uh my question is when we are uh setting this products to the I T company, like they will provide consultancy services, development and will be there, right? How can we categorize them into profit centers?
Then you can, at that time, you can categorize into based on the application, for example, you are providing services on SAP, you are providing services on Oracle or any other thing, you can create SAP as a profit center.
Okay. So they will
And then you can
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so in that case, you have one more thing you called segment.
Okay.
So what I can do, I can simply say SAP, Oracle or the different, different applications where I am providing my services. Everything I can group into a segment called I T, I T product or I T services.
Okay.
Okay, and when you have this, right, anything is fine, yeah, and then when you have the different, different employee. You have something called employee cost, when we say employee cost, basically, one employee belongs to one department only, if I am working as a SAP consultant, in my organization, I am tagged under SAP cost center. Or SAP product. Now, but my services may be distributed or my services are utilized by different this one, whenever you make salary to me, salary is an expense.
Yes.
So I can distribute my salary to different, different cost centers at the time of my payroll. Because I may be giving shared services, right, so at that time, I am basically related to SAP department only, but my services or my cost may be diversified or distributed into different other products, then I can do it, at the time of a payroll, they will give that split, this comes from the payroll side. They can allocate my salary charges to different cost centers to ensure my cost is not directly hitting one profit center, one department, it is shared by the different departments.
Okay, this, this applies to the uh employees who are working onsite also, like they go to USA or UK for the projects.
Right, correct.
Uh, and I have one more question. Uh, these people who are working onsite, they will be having two salaries, Indian salary and also the onsite salary. So how we will distribute this?
Your regular salary is called as normal one, the onsite whatever you get is called as per day.
Okay.
It's kind of your other benefit what you are receiving and that will be charged to the project which you are working for. That will be taken from your project cost center, you are working for a different client, for that particular client, there will be a project code created. And this onsite salary, whatever you are receiving, project elevence, whatever you receive, will be debited to that respective cost center.
Okay, so now in S four Hana, everything is connected to G. Okay, so now in S four Hana, everything is connected to G L, so we need to make all the G L accounts for this.
Yes, even in S C C, it is the same, whatever you asked so far, there is no change between S C C to Hana, it is the same way that it is executed in S C C. It is exactly the same way that is executed in S four Hana, there are no changes.
Okay, thank you Ajay.
Yeah. Shashi Kala.
Uh, related to trial balance, uh if client gave trial balance to upload in SAP. Uh, I mean February trial balance gave to upload in S four Hana system. Uh, yesterday date suppose, uh now the system date is in March, we have to upload that. Trial balance in February month, month itself, at that time, how it will be seen?
So what is your, for which month you got your trial balance?
February month trial balance, I received on uh March fifth, I mean this month.
Hmm, hmm, so forget about the date when you received it, your trial balance is related to which month?
February month.
So February month trial balance is supposed to be uploaded in February month only. So February month, you will not upload in March, you will be uploading it in February only, for that what we will do, you will open February period. And February T B, you will upload in February, you are receiving a February trial balance because your client is going live in March month. This point you are clear?
Okay, yes sir.
Now, when you are going into SAP, you are expecting something called opening balance, correct?
Yes.
Opening balance is nothing but closing balance?
Closing balance of February month.
Right, meaning whatever the balances that you are receiving for the month of a February. If you upload the trial balance of a February in February, February balance will become opening balance in March. If you upload directly in March, then it is wrong, all your financial statements, P N L balance sheet, everything will be wrong. So what we will make sure, we will ensure February T B is uploaded in February month in SAP. So that when they run February T B in SAP, they will see the same number whatever they had in the legacy system. Because it's a business continuation, right? There should not be any deviation.
To upload a trial balance, we will open February month, I mean O B fifty two settings, we open at the February month. And we will upload.
You will upload with the February last date. No, 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 entry date is captured in the system to update the timestamp when it was updated. But your reports are not based on entry date, your reports are based on posting date only, any report that you look at in SAP. Is completely based on posting date, not based on documented, not based on entry date, strictly based on posting date.
Okay, in this time, okay, twenty ninth February will, will be the posting date for all the trial balance.
Correct, that month last day, last calendar day.
That month last, okay.
Clear?
Thank, yeah, clears.
Oh, Chaya.
Like special period posts, postings.
No, 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 special periods are used only during the year end, otherwise you don't use it.
Okay. Means that last date we are, right, that one, we can think in that way.
No, it's a different concept for your special period, it is not used as regular. It is completely optional, there is no rule, you have to use a special period or not, it is only during your year end, at the time of your audits. There you will be using for your audit adjustment, your board meeting adjustments or any other adjustments, you will pass. Otherwise, we don't use it.
Oh, okay, so thank.
Yeah.
Okay, so every company have only one general ledger or multiple G L?
What was it?
Is every company have only one general ledger or multiple G L account?
G L account or no, your question is not clear.
Yeah, so if Apple company have only one general ledger account or multiple.
You mean to say leading ledger, non-leading ledger?
Uh huh.
Is that what your point?
Yes, uh huh, so first when we get the transactions, we will enter everything in general uh G L, right?
G L account, you mean to say cash account, bank account, those general ledger accounts you mean to say?
Hmm, yeah, we put all the transactions in general ledger.
Correct.
So is every company have multiple accounts of them, I mean multiple general ledgers or a single one?
No, no, multiple will be there, on an average, you will find a minimum thousand general ledger accounts in any company code. Minimum thousand will be there in any project.
Yeah, I said that in the first, first day, yeah, I remember.
Hmm, hmm, yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah. Any other question?
Ajay, by any chance, Fico consultant will create the G L accounts?
Yes, Fico consultant only, only will create the G L account during your project, during your hypercare. But once your hypercare support is completed, you will be on the regular support.
Okay.
Once you are on the support project, Fico consultant will not create, will not do anything in production system. Everything is taken care by the user only, if anything will have to be done in the production system by a consultant. You don't use your user I D, you will be using something called firefighter I D, you heard any, anything called firefighter? There is something called, huh, there is something called firefighter I D, with the help of firefighter I D, you will do. Activities in production like master data creation or transaction posting, but not with your I D, your I D in production. Will only give the display access, no creation, no changes.
I think all the mass, all the master data we can create in the development system, uh like.
Yeah. Correct.
Okay, okay, from product, development to production, we can move the data.
Data will not move, only configuration will move, only configuration will move. Transaction data, master data, reports will not be moved, they are separately individually created in every system. Development master data will stay only in development, it will not go from development to anywhere, if you want it in quality. Again, you have to create in quality, if you want in production, again you have to create it in production. This changes movement is only applicable for settings, configuration.
Okay, whatever we are creating is, is a master data all for our, our testing only?
Correct, initially you don't get to know the real data from the client, you, what you will do, you will take some samples and then the sample data only you will create.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Okay, yeah.
Uh, Ajay, one last question, uh you said, um. There is one object called rise of object, when there is a gap to identify with the help of rise of object, we will identify the gap, right? So is there a full form for that R I C E F W or is that?
Yes, yes, there is a full form, there is a full form. R represents report, I represents interface, C represent conversion, E represent enhancement. F represent form, smart forms and W represent workflow.
Okay.
It's a six digit letter, six things are there, you heard something called A B A?
Yeah, I heard the word.
A B A is a module, alright, now whenever you are talking about rise of object, rise of object is the point. Wherever you identify something called fit gap analysis.
Yeah, yeah.
Now, in this fit gap analysis, you will be identifying some gap. This gap will be filled with the help of rise of object.
Yeah.
Clear?
Yes, yes.
Yeah. Anil?
Hello, yeah, Ajay, question is regarding to F S V, okay, for.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, for a income and statement balance sheet and what we have that cash flow.
Hmm.
We will use the forms or if you want to connect with the business, what are all the details we need to collect, what format?
For F S V is not a form, F S V is a A L V report, meaning you will get the output on the system, which you can download into an Excel sheet.
Hmm, okay. Well, based on the transactions, it will flow, right?
Ajay, hello. Hello. Sir, can you hear me now? Yeah, yeah, I think some network issue, there is something called dashboard report, you heard dashboard report?
Hmm.
These dashboard reports are generally prepared in your B I B W modules. So in every project, if they want to look at this reports, you know, the. Uh, in a different dimensional way, through pie charts and then different different diagrams. We will be using these things with the help of B I B W report, but from your SAP, you will not get this kind of representation, you will get. Your traditional P N L format only, you cannot get any dimensions on it. For that, you will be using either B P C or you will be using or you will be depending on B I B W reporting.
Okay, okay. Okay, thanks.
Okay, yeah. All right, fine then, so we will connect at the same time tomorrow, whatever the questions that you have, please make sure that you will make a note of it. You can start posting your questions in the group, either I will respond or those who are aware of that point. Can respond to your questions, meaning we will be helping, we will be getting to know each other. Clear?
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, all right, fine then, good night.